You are live.
Good evening and welcome to the June eleventh, twenty twenty four Select Board Meeting. Our first order of business is public comment. You are welcome to speak for two minutes on any items that are not presently on the agenda. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak?
Nope.
All right. Moving on. For our board members, anybody have comments from the board? Mr. Costanzas.
Recognizing that June is Pride Month and Happy Pride. Recognizing all the members of the LGBTQ plus community and encouraging people to take advantage of the different pride events in the area. As well as for those who are on Xfinity, there's a lot of information about pride through Xfinity and the library I know has a nice collection. And also recognizing that June is PTSD Awareness Month. Raising the awareness for all the effective treatments that are available to those that suffer from post traumatic stress disorder, and it's not just veterans, but victims of domestic violence, sexual assault and other violent events, including natural disasters. As well as the library, there's also NAMI.org, who's the National Association of Mental Illness that can provide a lot of information. That's it.
Thank you.
I got nothing.
Okay, moving on, Town Administrator's Report.
And I just have two small items for you tonight. As folks I'm sure can tell, the library project is moving along. The temporary fencing went up last week and the asbestos abatement should begin next week, Monday, we're expecting. We are working on plans for a groundbreaking ceremony, so more information will come of that. We would like to obviously get those who want to come and celebrate the milestone that we finally hit. So we will be working on that over the next few weeks. And just town offices will be closed next Wednesday and observance of Juneteenth.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple of appointments. One for Robert Nelson to the position of Acting Police Sergeant effective July one, twenty twenty four.
Chief Solis. Thank you, I know Bob is on Zoom. Up there. So. As we looked at the budget last year, coming up for this July, we was looking at to see how we can be better as a police department and where we can grow. We have two sergeants and a lieutenant right now, and adding the third sergeant would keep, would place a, would place a supervisor on every shift except two weekend day shifts. So having supervisor on increases accountability, decreases liability, ensures that everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing. There's Bob there, he is.
You couldn't see him, so I changed that.
So Bob has really stepped up over the past couple of years. He has taken upon himself to continue in his education within the department. He has established himself as a field training officer, so he's really, he went to the schooling for that, and he's also taken under his wing all the new officers that we've been hiring to ensure that they are going about their business and doing everything that they're supposed to be doing in the proper way. He is dedicated and he's proven his capabilities through what I've seen over the past, you know, ten years that I've known him. And he's constantly been increasing as time goes on. So I think he's the most senior patrol officer that we have right now. And I think this is just a natural step for him, and I think this will give him good experience for, you know, the process that we're going to be putting forth later on. This is just an acting position, but that doesn't mean that he's going to be doing this in title only. He is, he has to do exactly what other sergeants do, he has to be responsible, just like the other sergeants. He's the full authority of the sergeants and he is the financial, he'll get the financial benefit of it as well, too. So it's not just a title position at all, it's an actual, this is, this will be his sworn position until otherwise. The reason I said I'm requesting for the July first is that is the new budget, and that's when we can absorb and start paying him that new rate.
Excellent. Robert, is there anything you'd like to say?
I'm hoping you can hear me, not too much, but I'm just looking forward to the opportunity. I appreciate the kind words from the chief and the department and, you know, I appreciate everybody's support and I'm looking forward to kind of jumping right in and doing what I know I can do.
Comments or questions?
No, no.
No.
The only comment I would like to make is just to point out that what the chief had stated that with the situation three years ago where you didn't get the sergeant, instead of just hiding away, you actually used it as an opportunity to really develop your personal skills and training as well. That's to be commended along with your twenty years of service, so I do thank you and I appreciate the fact that you stuck with it.
Nice, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
With that, I'll take a motion.
Great. I move to appoint Robert Nelson to the position of Acting Police Sergeant for the town of Stowe effective July first, twenty twenty four, and until the position is filled with a permanent appointment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service. Okay, moving on, our next appointment is Mark Brozek to the EDIC through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. I know he's away, so he's, that's why he's not able to comment. Do you have any comments or insights, Denise?
Sure, I mean, Mark is a great candidate, we had a very nice conversation about what he hopes to accomplish on the EDIC. He's enthusiastic about working with the businesses in town, hoping to really be a liaison between the businesses and town government, specifically the planning board and with some of the bylaws and zoning laws in town. I think like the last two that we appointed, he's not active on committees, but really wants to give back and thought he would start here. If you appoint him this evening, he will be the third member. We need four for our quorum, I have a fourth member. The woman is out of the country until midweek next week, so hopefully on your twenty fifth agenda, we will be able to appoint her once I can connect with her and then the committee can at least start meeting until we fill it up. But I think Mark will be a great addition to the two that we just appointed.
Okay, great. Any comments from the board?
Nope.
Nope.
Seeing and hearing none.
You ready for motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Mark Brozek to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission EDIC for the remainder of a five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second. The remainder of a five-year term, but ending twenty twenty six, so it started twenty twenty one, okay.
All right.
We're trying to keep with the terms that were in place because they were set by bylaw when we first started.
Got it.
Okay, explains that. I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But the record shows unanimous. Okay, moving on, Select Board Committee Assignments.
So if I may, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
So the motions in front of you, you have a number of motions for the Select Board appointments. There are motions that are in brackets that are not up, the term is not expired. If you want to nominate or appoint someone else, you're welcome to. If the candidate that currently serves would like to continue and the board is okay with that, you don't need to take any motions on those. So there are a number of existing terms, and then there are ones that you do have to appoint, whether it's the same person that's currently serving or somebody else, because those terms have expired.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'll stay on capital planning.
I'll stay on the what do my?
Green Advisory?
Green Advisory.
So that one will have to be an appointment.
I will, yep.
Okay. I know that Courtney had stated that she would like to continue in the committee appointments that she has.
All right, I didn't read one that's up.
And that Green Board is also indicated in the past that she would stay on the appointments that she presently has.
Yes, Hector, you're also the MBTA Advisory Committee member.
That's the one I was thinking of, yeah, I'll stay on with that.
And I'm fine to remain if you want me to stay on as your MEPC and magic representative, that's fine with me.
Sure.
Okay, great.
All right. Do you want me to read the motions?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Hector Costanzas as the Select Board Appointee to the Green Advisory Committee for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Can I second that?
You may.
Okay, second.
There's no conflict.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let's show it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Courtney Fraish as a Select Board Appointee to the Local Access Channel Advisory Committee for a two-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Denise Demkosky as the Select Board Representative to the Minuteman Advisory Group on Interlocal Coordination, or MAGIC, for a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Hector Costanzas as the Select Board Representative to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority MBTA Advisory Committee.
Second, that doesn't have a term.
Uh, for, I don't know.
I don't know. Do you want to do it for a year and then we'll?
For a one-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Yep, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 But the record shows unanimous. All right, and moving on. We have a number of appointments, both paid and in volunteer positions, so we're going to take them in blocks.
Just two blocks.
We'll do the paid positions first.
Sure. Ready?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to make the following reappointments of individuals in paid positions subject to the terms indicated. One-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Assistant Town Administrator, Human Resources Director Erin Mulcahy, Department of Public Works Director Brian Hatch, Town Council KP Law PC, Treasurer Brad Brightman and Tree Warden Bruce E. Fletcher.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing and hearing?
I don't think the motion was done.
I wasn't done, I, I was going to read all the one-year appointments, sorry.
Nope, my mistake.
I was just taking a breath, okay. Fire Department, one month from July first to July thirty first, twenty twenty four. Fire Chief John Paul Benoit, Emergency Management Officer John Paul Benoit. One-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Full-time firefighters Barry Evers Captain, Mark W. Geren, firefighter EMT, Call Lieutenant Eric Benoit, firefighter EMT, Call Lieutenant, Rachel Rogan Dewey, firefighter EMT, Matthew McNulty, firefighter EMT, Olivia Lang, firefighter EMT, Camden Harley, firefighter EMT. Police Department, full-time police officers, Michael Slicy, Chief of Police, Cassandra Scott, Sergeant, David Gogan, Sergeant, Christopher Cress, Patrol Officer, Robert Nelson, Patrol Officer. Robert Nelson, Acting Sergeant. Brandon Murphy, Prosecutor, John Butler, Patrol Officer, John Fantasia, Patrol Officer, Jason Rogers, Patrol Officer. Per DM, Special Police Officers William Bosworth, John Connors, Darren Thrain and Jeffrey Beckwith.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
But the record shows unanimous.
All right, and Mr. Chair, I move to make the following reappointments of Volunteer Committee Members, the positions having been duly posted and for which the applicants have indicated their willingness to be reappointed. One-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Hudson Light and Power Representative Arnold Epstein, Monticicet Area Regional Transport Mart Allison Tool, Recreation Commission, Samantha Altieri, Michael Bush, Allison Lampkin and Dan Nicholson, Veterans Graves Committee Patricia Bolton, Fence Viewers Select Board. Two-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Cynthia Perkins, Local Access Channel Advisory Committee Meredith Bartlett, Bob Glorioso, Lisa Livina, Lee Pappas. Three-year appointments with terms ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Conservation Commission Holly Clack, Jeffrey Saunders. Historical Commission Andrew Crosby, Open Space Committee Kathleen Sfera. Registrar Our Voters, Robert Webster, Trustee of the Randall Relief Fund, the Randall Town Fund and the Town Farm Fund Louise Peacock. Five-year appointments with terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty nine. Zoning Board of Appeals David Hartnagle.
Second.
Any discussion? I quick question. With Allison going to Mark, do I need to recuse?
There's no financial consideration or ethical concern with that.
I just wanted to ask for clarity on that, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The record shows unanimous.
May I make one comment? So just if you're wondering your paid appointment list, so with the charter changes that went into effect, you're only appointing the full-time members of the departments, which is why the police and fire list is decreased from the prior years. We no longer do the dispatchers, the call firefighters, whatnot, so those, that's why your appointment list is shorter than it has been in the past. I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
And there is a list in your pocket of those who either we did not hear from for reappointment for board and committees or who have chosen not to be reappointed. We are still waiting on a few that may be on your twenty-fifth agenda if need be, but for the most part, Phoebe heard from almost all of them.
Thank you. All right, the next thing is the permit for the twenty twenty four Recreation Department voting program. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Sure, Mr. Chair, on the recommendation of the Lake Boone Commission, I move to grant a commercial use permit to the Stowe Recreation Department for its voting program for Camp Stowe and the town beach for the twenty twenty four season, valid through December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion?
This is just the regular one, we, they always come forward with, right, yeah.
Yes, it is. All right. Then we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
But the record shows unanimous. Moving on, the addition to the traffic rules and orders, the speed safety zone on Sudbury Road, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the addition of a section to the traffic rules and orders to designate a twenty mile per hour speed safety zone between two seventy-seven Sudbury Road and three twenty-two Sudbury Road as proposed by the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee at this meeting.
It hasn't been proposed yet.
Well, it is proposed as of now, you could amend the motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
No, I, I think it's great.
Quite frankly.
You guys voted on it back in January.
Yeah, we did.
We're just waiting for the signs to be delivered.
I think it's fantastic.
And then we'll advertise like we're supposed to, read the paper and then, you know, start the enforcement.
Will they get a frowny face?
They will get it, yeah.
They'll have blue lights flashing, I mean, that would be fantastic.
All right, any further discussion or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but the record shows unanimous. Moving on. Policies, credit card policy.
I, so, okay, yes.
Before we do a motion, is it worth discussing since there might be amendments?
Well, actually, technically, we're not supposed to discuss until there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, then, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the credit card policy as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
Oh, yes. I think, do you have?
I, no, I don't have anything to say about this.
I noticed in the policy, it says that the department heads are responsible for the cards. But it didn't seem clear, are they issued the cards and anybody in that department that uses the card gets it from the department head?
So that's at the discretion of the department head. The department head has issued the card in their name in the town of Stowe. If they choose to allow a staff member to utilize it, it's under the discretion of their department head.
So can a staff member in that department apply for a card as well if they have a need? Okay, so only department heads can apply for the, can even get a card?
And there's only about six department heads that have been issued a credit card. Those that were, when I started here for the first few years, one of, I think we've talked about, one of the first things I did was get an Amazon account because people couldn't buy things. And then when I review the invoices every week, I was noticing large amounts of reimbursements being put through by the same employees week after week because they need to conduct business. A lot of businesses now no longer take purchase orders or checks. So I found a bank that would allow us to do a sort of corporate account that has one main account that I have access to and then I can assign who is it, an individual user that receives a card, and then I track all the purchases, I can see what's being, I can change the balances if I need to, if, you know, Mike will say, oh, I really need to make a big purchase, I can go in and amend his limit for the month. For the most part, it is only department heads making purchases. You know, someone will come to me and say, I need to make a purchase, I will enter it with the credit card that I have. Mike will allow his staff to utilize it, although we've had some issues where tax is being applied because they're not as careful as, say, a department head to make sure the tax exempt status is covered. But it is at the discretion of the department head because ultimately it falls on them if someone's using it within their department.
Is that something, not as lengthy, but just as, should it be specified in the policy that cards would only be issued to department heads?
Well, I, I have it, just, department heads assigned are solely responsible for the purchase made with their card.
Right, and that's where I got confused because I didn't know somebody else, could someone else get a card and all of a sudden the department head is responsible for that card? I didn't know that only the department head could get the card.
Quick question, or I think it's, there's only a certain number of cards, too. Like, it's not like it's going to be
Right.
Like, it, through the bank, correct? Like, you can't have an unlimited number of credit cards that you apply, like?
We could if I did, so we have one master account with one balance, so if I wanted to give
I just went through this with our bank and work the other day, which is why I'm saying, like, it's, it's a long, it's a process.
If I wanted to give forty people a five hundred dollar balance, I could.
Right.
We're not going to, because that would be a nightmare.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I could specify in here only department heads. But again, it's not every department head, so I don't want to just say
And what if there isn't?
Only designated department?
I could say, um.
Something like that.
What if a department doesn't have a department head, but they still need to purchase things, like?
Didn't have an interim, right?
Or they would come to me, you know, it's like
Right, but that's what I'm saying, like
Like, not everyone has an Amazon account, so when a department says we need something, they'll send it to me. I put the purchase through and then they just pay through their, their account. Because again, while they're all nice to have, we don't need millions of accounts out there because it just becomes accounting nightmares.
Right.
So I can put something in.
Yeah, like what you said, only designated people, something like that.
Only designated department heads.
So maybe under the purpose of the policy to establish guidelines and procedures for the legal and appropriate use of town-issued credit cards to designated department heads?
True. Perfect.
Perfect.
I will make a new motion whenever you're ready.
Or we could do an amendment to the motion and say, I amend the motion to
And then you could accept the amendment?
Add the amendment that Denise just wrote in there.
Right, so I'll
Are there any other?
That was the only one I had.
I will say, and I do want to just touch upon it, we talked about it a little bit when the auditors were here, and I did struggle with the international fees. Certainly the sales tax exemption, if someone's charged, they should just go back and return it and use this tax exempt certificate or call and send in our tax exempt certificate. The international fees is a more difficult one. Right now I have it that it's still the responsibility of the purchaser, which would be whoever made it, to contact the vendor. The majority, well, we've had, it's happened twice and both times the company has refunded these international fees because they are a requirement of the bank. But in neither case did the purchaser here know that they were using an international company. One was the police and they were based out of like Colorado, but yet an international fee because their headquarters was international. He called, they clarified, they refunded us. So I did leave it that it would have to be, they would either have to rectify it or remit a reimbursement to pay it. I'll be honest, I went back and forth on that because it's not really anyone's fault if we're charged that, but taxpayers in Stowe shouldn't be paying for international banking fees, so I wanted to just bring that up to see if you wanted to keep it, that if they can't get it refunded, then whoever makes the purchase is responsible for reimbursing it. Or if as a town, we would decide that we would cover the cost of unintentional international fees if they can't get it reimbursed.
I'd rather the latter. If they didn't know it was going internationally.
I, I will say they've all been, I mean, they're small, like one was two dollars and eighty-five cents and one was like eighty-something cents. But in both cases, no one knew until I actually looked at the credit card and said, oh, there are these fees on there. They went back through all their records and had no, and I, we called the bank and it's a bank fee, excuse me, it's not a company fee. So, but that was the one that kind of bothered me that I wasn't sure, so I wanted to just bring that up.
This might sound lame, but I know my Capital One account does not guarantees no international fees. Is it possible to get that from the bank for the?
So not the bank that we went through.
Yeah, I still don't think the purchaser should be responsible for the fees, especially if they didn't know it.
So
But, so devil's advocate on this one, not that I don't agree with you, but I, I see what Denise is saying as to why she struggled because ultimately it is our job to make sure that the taxpayers are, like, like any of this money, this isn't our money, like any money that they spend isn't, isn't the it's, it's the taxpayer's money. And so I think that, like, having a policy that says that we're not going to put the onus on the taxpayer just willy-nilly that it is going to have to come out of a budget line item from a department, I think to me makes sense because from, like, from a transparency point. Again. Just playing devil's advocate on it.
I get what you're saying.
But I do understand what you're saying, too, like
If they, if the purchaser didn't know, because I don't want the town employees suddenly having to
Well, they're not going to pay it out of there, I mean, they're going to pay it out of their department, like
No, they're paying it, because if they're paying it out of the department, it's coming out of a
I see.
A budget line, so they're paying it out of pocket. I mean, again, these two instances, they didn't because the companies reversed them. But it's not, quite frankly, it's not the company that we're purchasing from's fault either, it's the bank.
I see.
And so it puts us into that sort of situation that
So I think I would be okay taking the reimbursement payment out. I do think, though, that the onus has to be on the purchaser to rectify the situation. Like, I think there has to be a good faith effort to remedy it. And then if it doesn't get remedied for whatever reason.
Well, maybe change the, change it to contact the vendor to rectify the charge or work with the department head or town administrator to figure out what's going on. Because if it's someone that knew that it was going to happen and did it anyway, then we can't get it reimbursed, you're responsible for it. But if, for the most part, they're incidental fees, you're going to see that and go, okay, I get that. They can't get it refunded, well, the town will pay for it.
Okay, I, right, so I need to put that, I need to translate that into words, so when we have a payment, the town accountant will say, okay, the policy that the board says, we will pay for it if it won't be. So how would you like to actually say that? Because I don't think work with people will cover her. So should an international fee be applied, it's responsibility of the purchaser to contact the vendor to rectify the charge. So should an international fee be applied, it's responsibility of the purchaser to contact the vendor to rectify the charge? If unrectifiable?
If non, if non-reimbursable.
If non-reimbursable, the town will be responsible?
Yeah, the town.
Well, can it be brought to the attention of the department head and town administrator for further action?
Well, it will because I'm the one that gets the bill.
Right.
So it will, but I need to clarify what further action means for a policy, so the town accountant could legally pay it based on policy.
Yeah, I think it's the town, like.
Yeah.
So I can certainly put that in here, but that won't solve what she does with it when it comes through.
If, in fact, it is non-reimbursable, the town will then be responsible for payment of the international fees.
What does that come out, like, what bucket does that come out of?
Whatever bucket the department decides. It would be the department, the department budget line.
Okay.
Concern with that is that all they have to say is, well, I can't get in touch with them, so the town pays for it. Do want some onus on the purchaser to try and.
Okay, so let's, so I will say if non-reimbursable, purchaser will work with the department head, with their department head and/or town administrator for payment of the international fee.
That's good.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
If non-reimbursable, the purchaser will work with their, with their department head and/or town administrator. And with the town administrator for payment for payment of the international fee by the town. I'll specify that. The purchaser will work with their department head and/or town administrator for payment of the international fee by the town.
So it should an international fee be applied to a purchase, it is the responsibility of the purchaser to contact the vendor to rectify the charge, period?
Yes.
If none. I amend the motion to include that.
Second.
All right, we need to vote first on the amendment. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
The record shows unanimous. Now, let's go back to the original motion. And any further discussion on that?
No.
Well, yes, because the original motion was as presented.
But now it's as amended.
But now it's as amended.
Yeah, as amended.
But do I have to make a new motion? Because the motion that I made was, this is, this is why I'm confused about making the motions ahead of time. So the motion that I made was as presented.
Well, no, now we would be voting for the.
Not vote for that.
So.
We would be voting on the motion as amended, if that's the way we normally do it in town meeting, right?
So going forward, I will have Phoebe remove the as presented, as amended, and you will just move, move to approve the credit card policy at this meeting. And then it would be either as amended or, because then you'll discuss it and approve it.
Okay, then I'm not going to even say that for the next one. Okay.
So then, let's do it, since it was as presented, we need to actually vote on that. And because it was seconded, so all those.
Or you can withdraw the motion.
I'm withdrawing the motion. Mr. Chair, I move to withdraw the motion.
Okay, is there a new motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the credit card policy as amended at this meeting.
Second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The record shows unanimous. Onto our next municipal vehicle use policy.
Ready for motion?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the municipal vehicle policy at this meeting.
Have a second?
Second, oh, yeah, sorry.
Discussion, any discussion?
Yes, I had a question about the cell phone use.
Yes.
Because I was surprised that the policy didn't say cell phone use was possible as long as it's hands-free. Because I'm thinking inspectors, the police, the fire department, all of those are municipal vehicles, and they do use their cell phones in emergencies, and so.
So that's why it covers emergency usage, the exigent circumstances paragraph. But even if it's hands-free, it's really still distracted, and we really don't encourage employees to be on the phone while they're driving, hands-free or not.
Don't want you making plans for Friday night, definitely.
Sure.
In the event of exigence, so that does cover it?
Yes.
So all the police and a fire.
Yes, obviously, if they're on a call, we would consider that an exigent circumstance.
Okay.
Naturally, they're usually on their radio versus a cell phone, but, yeah. So the policy really came about for a couple of reasons. I, I think I, I think I've made you, so every Monday when you all get the, or when the the police log goes out to the paper, I get an unredacted one. I can see everything that happens and whatnot. And I go through that every week, and there's been times, especially over the last few months, that I've noticed, oh, ex department was in a car accident, and then I call the department head and I say, how come I didn't know that your vehicle was in a car accident last week? Oh, there was no damage. But we still have to know. We have to know who was driving, we have to know what the situation was. And after the third time that happened, I said, we need to get a policy that they are required, even though we've told, I've told them. We've had some other concerns about vehicles, not keeping them clean, potentially someone smoking in a vehicle, so I just want to put everything together. Wanted to have a policy that covered everything so that we can address the issues when they come up and stop finding out about things, you know, by reading a police report to see what happened in town with our vehicles, so.
Okay.
This was compiled of a number of different towns as normal that have been adopted and tailored to what we need here. So that's why it actually is coming forward now.
Great.
Okay.
I also had a question about, did it cover somewhere about, you know, they can't go to the liquor store and buy alcohol on their way back from a call?
It does not say they cannot make a purchase. Obviously, it says they cannot be under the influence, but I think.
But that, I mean, that seems to me, if you're in your work vehicle, you're not going to, I, I know, but like.
You're not going to drink, but you're coming back from somewhere and.
I know, but as a condition of your employment, you really shouldn't go shopping while you are.
Well, but keep it in mind, I mean, you can't say that because officers might stop at Shaws to pick up a sandwich at lunch.
Fire department does all the time.
They go and get a coffee. I mean, so you, you have to be careful when you're saying you shouldn't shop. You know, do you really want to quantify you can't purchase alcohol? If you want, that's fine. I just feel like it's sort of a, it's a questionable, like, what else do you, should they not stop and buy cigarettes, which they shouldn't do either? So at what point do we want to mandate?
Right.
Transporting alcohol in a municipal vehicle. Shouldn't be allowed.
So we can put that in there.
Well, also then you'd add cannabis.
Or any substances that require a license, like, I mean, what if they happen to have a prescription for something that they are carrying? Like, I, it is, to me, that seems like a real slippery slope. You know what I mean? Like, say you, I don't know.
I don't know, if you don't think the alcohol restriction is needed, then we can leave it out.
I, I feel like if, if that rises to a level of a problem, then I hope that Erin has been involved at some point that.
Me, too.
Yeah.
That she is aware that there is a problem that an employee is stopping in the liquor store.
I mean, I would say, we do have two vehicles that are take-home vehicles. The two chiefs have a take-home vehicle, you know, and they are entitled to drive those twenty-four, seven.
Right.
Weekends on their own time. You know, is there a time that in, when Mike's off duty and he's just on his weekend, he stops at a liquor store? Maybe.
Yeah.
He's not technically on duty, but he's on call, so he's in his vehicle. Do we want to say he can't do that when he's on his personal time? That's where I would, you know, it's not so much people that are working and during work hours, it's the two take-home that are entitled to go all over the country in case they need to come back here. That's my only, I would be a little concerned with that.
Okay.
Not that I think he's either one of them. Alcohol, but I just don't want to get into that gray area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I have no other comment.
Okay, was there an amendment in this one? No.
No.
Just a question. Okay.
So, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, meeting minutes?
Um, I, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
Second. Any discussion, comments?
No, but great.
I'll take a motion, or I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Okay, board correspondence and updates. Anything?
The letter from Frank Biggs sounds pretty.
I believe this is the gentleman sitting in the audience.
That would be me, and I apologize for any spell checks my phone auto corrected. I read it, I was like. Really sorry about that. I am quite.
It was reasonable.
Yeah, it was a little ridiculous. I couldn't believe some of the stuff that was said, so, sorry.
So.
I also have a letter here that my wife wrote, in case anybody wants to read it at your own time. I don't even know if you can do that.
Can probably be submitted under board correspondence as well. And we can take it under advisement.
Yeah, I'm not sure, is there anything we can do?
Well. This, if we wish to discuss it, we can put it onto an agenda or.
Well, all right, is there an agenda item we can add?
Tonight?
No, not tonight.
We, we can add it to a meeting in the future, yes, if we wish to do that. And I can sit down and go over and take a look at it. Cannot discuss correspondence.
I understand that. I just don't want to add an agenda item if there's really nothing we can do. And except to refer to the chief of police.
Right, well, we can explore those avenues and then figure it out from there. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I, I do think it's worth, I, I think he brings up some.
Very good point.
Some very good points in this, and I think that, though it's not, this is not the time for us to have this discussion, I do think that it is a larger discussion that a lot of people.
We need to, yeah.
You know, would need to, it, yeah, needs to be addressed, so thank you for writing it.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it.
Bring, bring it to our attention.
I, I will just add that your June twenty-fifth meeting is already fully booked, so it would not be June twenty-fifth.
Right, so it'll probably have to go into either.
July ninth would be the next, and we can look at that agenda, but you have several presentations, like, the presentations on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, on the twenty, yes, I'm sure. Okay, so possibly for the July ninth.
Okay.
And I will, you know, obviously, we've seen this, I will just comment that the police are continuing to monitor it. The Recreation Committee is known, knows about it, so I would certainly have to include them in any agenda items since the beach falls under their purview.
Right, and hopefully they'd be willing to come in and discuss it with us. Okay.
Another question I had was the denial of the special permit for Gluesendale. Haven't we seen that, right?
No, this is the formal denial. It had been continued and continued and continued. And the planning board finally issued a denial based on lack of information presented.
Okay.
Other than that, nothing else.
Okay, then I will take the.
I'm just a super iceman still wanted to talk.
Every time we get one Joyce says, I have to put it in factor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to give me your wife's letter, I'll put in the next packet.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.